All right, so, all right. Well, now we're going to talk about we as a board, and what we have said in the notes, not the new each of the other, and we were actually working on this project. So there's one paper here that I can do in practice with Tracy. I'm sorry we took off the draft, sorry about that. But these are the goals that we decided on. And then after that, we had a retreat in August. And these are the pieces under those goals that we decided everyone should focus on. racial justice equity, we're talking about monitoring implementation of the faculty, of the youth teams, of the process, to ensure changes result in feedback. And I can say, we've had some really good results in this one in particular. We keep passing like two or three policies of the board meeting. The bottom line could be the daunting superintendent and his team, also the principals, can find a lot of synergy around this. And the committee seems to feel more good, people want to get engaged. They're really good about their voice, they're hard. And so I can definitely use the bacon some meat for it. So there's other things in obviously equity that we can focus on. But this is what we said a couple months ago. So as we go through the year, and we're not going to spend any time on tonight, but what I do think as we go through our next retreats, that we should look at these again and say, are there new ones that we want to develop and put under these? Because we feel like something is done, it's never done, but can we now help focus on something else as well? So start thinking for our next conversation around this. And you may ask me the next month, January, or so that you come back with some ideas. The next one, social emotional well-being. And that was to work together to clarify the wrong vision and sustainability plan of continuing to access the social emotional mental health support first, once S R funds ends. And now remember, these are our goals as a board. So these have to do with what our responsibility is in each of these areas. And we're responsible for the finances ultimately of the board and helping to get projects we pass and how we do that. And so we've invested a lot of money this next couple years with public relations, on social emotional women, especially in mental health. And we know that's going to end in three years. So how are we as a board starting to think about driving the resources, getting the investments or whatever into the school system so that we can keep those growing and expanding? Family and student engagement. And this has been one of ours, well, since I've been on, maybe talking about how we can do this. And I think that part about how we're doing more than we're able to do. Review the board committee assignments and evaluate what are not engaging ways that help further our goal and student engagement goals. And that's something we're not going to talk about tonight, but we will be talking about soon, because we have this group that we all told the carrot that these committees we go into, some of them are still appropriate and good, and there are others that are out there that maybe some of us are going to, or maybe we're not, but we should be. So we need to talk about what's out there in these committees. And who's missing, who will we want connection with, that we need to connect with, that we have to get family and students. Start thinking about that and sending, if you think of something, just send me a quick text or email, I'll start keeping a list. Any things that we can talk about as a board that I don't want to sign ourselves to do this? The other one is to identify ways to leverage the older community types and gatherings from our 2020 student listening session. And what that was, which shall be, I think you heard most of us talk about them before in some of our accomplishments we had during the pandemic. We had listening sessions at teachers in middle schools and also at high school and teachers in school. And there's good night conferences and that's important. So we met the students and some of them were the councilor there, some were the principals there, and some of them were students. And really talked about their mental health as they saw it, what little gaps, what do they need, what kind of supports do they want. It was the most amazing experience. And the day, the last day of the last one, the last day, the governor shuts this. Yep. So we were like, okay, done. So we still want to keep working on these really difficult issues. And then additional comments we had, and part of that is that we wanted to identify those individual needs groups. And this is one of the results of that. Again, we listened to you guys in August, and this is what we're turning out. If you want professional help and help us in facilitating that group. And also, we wanted to establish a timeline of learning work for the year. I think we've done that, we didn't do it very formally, but I think we're moving all the issues forward in a linear way, but also in breadth, we simply haven't focused. So did anybody have any questions or comments that we can add to that goal?
Well, one thing that I would add to that is that as we set our goals for 2020, 2021, and it was like such chaos. And so we, there was a desire to maintain the goal because we never really got to, from our perspective, to be able to learn, to be able to address, to really dig into them because COVID just took over everything. And so then we felt similarly in August, we were like, there's still more to be done. And we felt like we were even in a little bit closer of a spot to be able to dig in further. And so that's just for context. We've had these, actually, these have been, I think these have been the goals since I joined.
Cheers.
Yeah.
We just, we put a different emphasis on them. That they were just these goals that we pigs can't, I think that was the problem, that these goals, when we first joined. And we had no direction or thought, and no discussion about what we were going to actually do under each of them. So what we've done this time is to say, it must be tangible. What are some things that we need to do? And these are different than the goals that are in the strategic plan that we, you know, hold the account, the superintendent accounts with, you know, in terms of, on, kind of, this equation on. That's different, they're similar, they're inclusive, but this is what we as a board, what our goals are. Any other comments or thoughts before we turn it over to Josh? Anything you want to think about our goals?
I just think that you also have to wrestle with, there's a saying, you know, some questions have no right to go home.
The what?
Some questions have no right to go home.
Yes.
How will we foster racial justice in that? So although you have started to unpack that, I just would, as you're all thinking about leaving the way you're talking about the case, I mean, I would not be surprised if these are still, these are deeply rooted in each of your core values. And that's why it was partly also a struggle to say, well, we haven't finished this. And I would push that you did do a lot during COVID in these areas. And sometimes it's hard because you weren't necessarily at events, but there was a lot of discussions and actions during that time. The SRO competition was during COVID. You know, and so you just, you might get comfortable that you don't have to come up with new themes or goals every year as much as you're starting to say, what are we going to dive deeper into this? Because I don't imagine that you'd be in a place, you know, August of 2022, where you say, well, there's no more work to do with racial justice.
That's all there is.
And social, emotional, and mental wellbeing. I mean, there's, that's part of where I think the sophistication deal as a board to start to achieve is, is a deep work. You're going to have to keep on unpacking this. There may be something else you could help, but I need your next layer up. So what does that mean this year is really critical.
And one of the things I'd like to add in our thinking is, as we're looking at it as a board, what do we want to do in each one of these? I'd also like to look out and say, what are other, you know, entities doing around these same issues and helping me a lot versus really anything? So those are some projects. And we also have a study session to have some kind of, and we're trying to think. At some point, we will have a study session opportunity. So if we don't have another topic that's pressing at the time, we may try to dive into one of these goals. Okay. So now comes the super fun part. And I am going to turn it over to Lisa, the leader of these staff, because I don't know all the particulars of your social history.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Then we feel pretty bonded.
Yeah.
That says a lot about our group. So that is the executive director for the American Leadership Forum, sometimes known as ALF, sometimes known as A L F sometimes. And I am in the current class, Class 28. And in the summer, we started in the beginning of the year, this year. And we did an adaptive leadership exercise and models at a day, talking about it. And I just, we went through multiple simulations. Does that sound familiar to you, John?
Yeah, case complications.
Yeah. And the whole time, I just was like, what if we use this in governance? And most of what I feel since being here, in this role, that I spend a lot of time explaining what governance is and what it isn't, and what we're actually responsible for on the board. And there is a huge misunderstanding of conception. And I even was thought relatively informed coming into this role. And I was like, oh, no, not that, okay. So I felt like, so Carla and I talked about this over the summer, or I think it was in the summertime, because Carla's also a graduate of A L F. And so we just, we were just kind of dreaming about having an additional tool to problem solve in a way that is not typical. And I would pass it over to Beth.
Okay. It's good to be here. And I think, you know, the job of the leader today is probably more complex than it ever has been. You know, at a time when people are demanding answers and pushing answers to really big, you know, retractable problems or irretractable problems. They look to the leaders, which would be all of you on the school board, to fix them and fix it now. And there are some questions, there are some challenges that can't be solved in that way. Leaders often get paid to have the answers. And so coming to an answer quickly is a part of what your value system or how values place on you to do goals. And there's a number of challenges that are coming at us these days that are not, can't be solved with a yes or a no or a foot policy change or a fill in the blank. And so this model was presented to us by Richard Blue, who's had with Russell Pandey Foundation for many years. He was good friends, or went to a board retreat for all the leadership across the country, national communities. And Ron Hybitts and Marty Linsky were at this retreat. And they brought this model, they were the head of the, they both worked for Cambridge Leadership Associates, or they founded that. And they both worked at Stanford and brought this model forward in a room full of 800 people rather than eight people, there's data that's right there, 108, 90. And Richard was the person who ended up going to the balcony. So the person who put a question forward that really was something that is not easily solved, not easily brainstormed by one person in the room. And Richard fell in love with it, called Ron Hybitts and Marty Linsky and said, can we use this? And he said, you can use it as long as you want to, and so you can only use it. There's many A L F groups that are still using it on a monthly, you know, quarterly, annual basis. I've used it with my own board, with the challenge that I was having with them as the executive director, totally get that I serve others at their pleasure, but sometimes I forget that. And I forget who, selectively, forget who I'm actually, who's working for whom. And this was a big challenge that I had, and we'd use this model. I went to the balcony, I turned my back, I presented a challenge. I was, I'd really been struggling with it, and there was no way for me to come up with a solution on my own. And so I think that this model is a really, can be, you can rent it, you can try it on, you can put it back on the shelf, whatever you want to do. But I think it's a great way for all voices in the room to have a thought or an opinion for some way to buy into what solutions might present themselves. And oftentimes, whatever the question is that's presented, you'll get 15 more questions that come out of this that probably need to be answered before you can even get to some of the solutions that might be rentable or triable with the person who's the case presenter. So I think it's often, for me, I oftentimes, I think one of the biggest challenges of leadership is trying to apply technical solutions to really adapt to challenges. And it never works, it will never work. How many of you were able, and there's no wrong answer here, to read the article? Let me write that one down, no? Okay. So the article really talks about, and I realize this from 2009, it was during the economic crisis. And the reason why I still use it, even though there's still, you know, great literature out there, is really because it's still so applicable today. The kinds of crises that were happening at that time, the financial crisis, the change in the way people were operating, the number of challenges with the invention of social media, and how quickly information travels, how quickly misinformation travels, how easy it is for people to reach you. That the work of leadership, and leadership being in kind of a permanent crisis, I think that crisis still exists today, it's become more of a way of doing business, I think, but, and less of a crisis. But in general, that the article talks about how quickly, when things spin out of control, we want things to go back to normal. And the urge to go back to the way that we used to do business because we know it, and it worked for us at the time, doesn't allow for new ideas to emerge, new ways of doing business to emerge. And oftentimes, running backwards, the question is still, the challenge is still out there. So going back to the old way of doing business is, it doesn't work anymore. Particularly, when you think about what's happened in the last two years, I can't imagine, can you even remember what business was like before COVID, before Georgia Floyd's murder, before, you know, just the last 15 months? I can't even remember what I used to do before all that happened. Is that kind of true for some of you too? Yeah, absolutely. And it being so emergent and so quick, and all happening at the speed of light and never ending, like what Josh just referred to in your goals, it will probably always be the goals. How you work to attain those will change, probably, several iterations of change over the course of the next 20 years, just based on the way the world is adapting at the same time that you were working. The main ideas in here is that in order to, in order to really hone those adaptive leadership skills, really tailored to the urgency, the high stakes, the challenges that you all are wrestling with, and the uncertainty of it all, is fostering adaptation as one of the primary ones, helping people develop the next practices that will enable the organization to thrive in the new world, even if they continue with the best practices necessarily for current success. The second key tenet is to embrace disequilibrium, which is a really hard thing to do. Keeping people in a state that creates enough discomfort to induce change, but not so much that they fight, we agree. And so particularly, I think you work with parents. I can't imagine keeping that temperature high enough for things to move forward, but low enough that people don't rehold or freeze on you is a really tough thing to do. One of the things that I really appreciate about Josh and working with Josh is I think Josh, I always feel like when I'm working with Josh, the heat is up high enough that I want to move my butt, but it's not so high or so low that I actually want to play or run, that I actually have time to create. And the people that are in the room that you're working with have time to sit with that kind of disequilibrium of, ooh, I don't exactly know what to do with somebody's creating space or enough space for me to be able to actually sit with that question for a while or not having the answer. And then generating leadership, giving people at all levels of the organization the opportunity to lead experiments that will help it to adapt and change in times. And your role as school board members, thinking about, you know, you're studying policy for the entire district, and you're leading the work of the district, managing multiple stakeholder groups. What do you think is the hardest part of that to you?
Do you want us to answer it, or just to hold it?
What's that?
Do you want us to answer that, or do you want us to just hold on to that question?
Oh, no, answer it would be great. I mean, think about, think about the work that you have in front of you. You know, what are the things that, that you as a board, I mean, I heard some of your answers about the why and what some of your strengths are, but what are those areas that have been really embracing adaptive leadership and not applying technical solutions that either scare you, pushes you as you operate as a board? You know, maybe it's too general of a question.
I'm not really sure if this answers it, sorry. But something that comes to mind is, for me, one of the biggest struggles I had is that push-pull of meeting expectations. And also trying to explain what we're really responsible for and what control we do have and don't have. And trying to do that at a rapid speed. And also trying to help people understand, governing doesn't happen on Facebook. And so like for me, it's that like real desire to want to inform people of what we're, why we're doing what we're doing, what are the pieces of play, and how we're grappling with, like, often deeply, deeply complicated circumstances, situations, and the solutions are, like, they're, at times, needs to be compromised. And then are, and is that compromise actionable? And like, and just like for my, this is sort of me, I guess, throwing out my brain thoughts. And just like for me, that's some of the struggles. And I feel like in the last two years, well, a little less than that, because of, you know, once, you know, I felt like we were diving into some really significant issues around mental health for our students. And then a global crisis hit, and we've been response, you know, trying to be responsive versus reactive in circumstances that are demanding reaction over and over and over again. And I don't know that I'll ever really unpack that experience fully, but as someone who has a clear why, that's been a real struggle to be able to then be with the, communicate that back out to the community so that they know that we're, I mean, so that they know that we're working with the best intentions possible.
And I'd like to say, I agree with what you said, that most things we've executed on those lines. And I'd like to add a nuance to it, advice that we all struggle with, which is, I mean, just, I think naturally, I'm a proactive person, I'm a really active, but sometimes you don't have to be both. You don't have to be good if you're able to switch. But we often hear from the vocal minorities, who is not necessarily speaking for the whole, but they are so loud, and it's so demanding that we have to also balance, you know, that that isn't necessarily the right direction. Like they want isn't necessarily the best for kids. And so we have to kind of go with this mantra, like, is this good for the kids? And what, how is this going to fit the kids? And always keeping that as the focus of what we do. And I find that's my compass, I mean, how I get to say, like, when all this noise comes at us. And as Tracy said, it has been, it has been incredibly painful to get people talking to us and yelling at us and accusing us of things. And just, you have to just sort of say, uh huh, I hear that, you're in pain, I get that. But what's best for the kids? And we just bring it back down. And that's been sort of one of the, trying to think as we've been talking, what is it that's been a struggle for me? It's the not, being able to turn off the screaming to get to what's, what's at the center.
And it's hard as a leader to foster people, people, their truth is the truth.
It is, right?
You know, and that really is, we all live in that to some degree, of being able to suspend what my truth is in letting the adaptation of what the new voice is coming into the market.
Well, maybe I'll also dub it as, board member, I'm a team, it's forcing out, you know, I'm not, because I
That's what you know.
It's hard to remember that I am a general manager of a team on a road and I'm getting close to coming from direct service, like, I want to get into solving a problem myself. Not necessarily say, hey, Josh, can you have your team respond to this situation? You know what I mean? Like, I just have this urge, right? And that's the most difficult thing, especially, I go to work, and I am a head. I come down at five, and I go up to the press box. You know what I mean? So it's just, it takes getting used to it. And I understand that having Josh and his team respond to whatever is the best way, is probably the best thing for the situation. But it's just, it's just difficult for me to not be a steward of changing the situation.
Again, speaking of adaptive change, I mean, I love, I love the concept of technical and adaptive change. Part of, part of that, and our contact, partly with contact, partly with that, which is part of technical change is to say, hey, this is the way it's going to be, folks, okay? So, I mean, today we were talking about payroll system, we started with payroll. It's going to make some people mad, because some of it's not going to work. But you can say, you got to go here, you have to shift to this new system, and then here's all the things we're going to do to help you adapt, you know, and help you look at it. But it is very difficult to say that, we've got half the people saying, hell no, that's not good. You know, and so that's, that's been the hard part, because then you've got to, like, you know, I take the whole idea of adaptive change, letting you adapt with your reality, and let me have you adapt with your own. And that takes a lot more work.
It does, and a lot of time.
Yeah, a lot of time.
Yeah. And I think the biggest challenge is that, that, like, implementing a new payroll system for the people that are downstream from that, that are going to be impacted by it, they're not going to think for one minute that you actually have thought through all of the downfalls. They don't pay attention to the work that's gone behind it. And what I think about what is really great about, or can be great about this model is it gives you guardrails or kind of a boundary to be able to operate within that generates as many ideas as you possibly can. So I think about work with your parent groups, or work with even staff in some cases. This could be a really great model because it, you have to get really clear on the challenge that's actually at hand. And so when Lisa and Josh and I started talking, and Elizabeth and started all talking about these, what's the challenge going to be so that we could, because we needed finance, we needed a lot limited. They went through five different, you know, 15 different iterations of challenges that were, that went down into the one that were likely, Lisa's likely going to present tonight because the difference between a technical challenge, there's people often get confused between what's a technical challenge and what's an adaptive solution. And most people think, because technical, technical problems are really easy to solve, they're easy to identify, like Cory said, he's got to go up to the press box, he could come up with the answer. But sometimes, if it's affecting people that are downstream, you can't go quickly to that solution. It's not as easy to solve as pressing the button. So real quickly, I just want to have you review the handout in there, that's the one that says technical problem versus adaptive challenge. It looks like this. And we're just going to walk through it really quickly before we start this. And then we're going to get really quickly, unfortunately, into the, into explaining the model. I'm going to just give you I'm gonna just give you a minute to kind of read through that yourself rather than talk through it. So now that you kind of have a clear idea of what's a technical problem versus an adaptive challenge, this model only, this peer consulting, um, model only works on adaptive challenges. It doesn't work on technical solutions. And as Lisa, as, as Lisa, Elizabeth, Josh and I were talking about, what would your, what would your question really be suddenly after we still volunteer? Because, um, she's actually done this before, um, in smaller groups and in large groups with her classmates. Is she, the question was, what is the role of student voice in policymaking? And we spent three hours, probably, on the phone together narrowing this down. And had we all been in a big room together, and we had the time, we could've done that in public so that you could see the process of getting down to what was some of the questions that were asked as, um, some of the challenges that were raised by this is, it started with increasing family engagement. And then my question was, what is family engagement? What does that look like? And then, um, as, as Lisa started going through, do you wanna explain kind of how you got there in this process?
Yeah, well, and I would say that it was definitely a collective, right? This was, this was a multiple, um, multiple conversation process. Um, and, um, you know, when we, when we really started with the big idea of fam, just engagement, like, family engagement, and then we had to narrow it, like, what does that mean? Who are we engaging with? Um, and as, uh, I think that, um, the question become, part of the question became, where is our role as the board? And how do we engage? And reverse that from the expectation of students engaging with us. How, you know, for example, like, how are we engaging with students and actively with students to participate? Um, does that make sense? So, um, so it was, um, because often too, like, you know, at the end, it's like frequently the statement of, at the end of the day, this is about kids, right? Like, our priority is kids and what's best for kids. And adults often can be a barrier to what is actually best for kids. So, um, it's easy to, and, and family engagement, um, like, I, I think Josh is really good at, at least grounding me in that, like, kind of pulling back from, if, if students are showing up to school, if students are doing well in school, like, families are made for students, like, that's not actually the question. And so just as we unpacked it, you know, what is the role for students in governance and policy? And in policymaking? Because they don't have a vote, but how, and how can be, um, how can we utilize their experiences and their, their voice into our own decision making?
I would say that cutting along through this whole process, never having done it before, and it's all this bull, um, it just hit me like a brick that all this time for two years, you've been talking about family engagement. And we've been talking about how do we engage them? You know, how are we gonna do this? How can we get families to be engaged? When we turned it on its head and said, no, that's really not the question. The question is how do we as a board, how do we engage? And how do we engage the students to help them be able to do, even walk in policy meetings? It was just like, oh, we're back to that, just, please, yeah. And kind of happened. How are we engaged by getting all these families involved? No, no. Cause that's one of the boards, that's the board actually, you know, we're, we're working. Anyway, so when we talked about student engagement, that made a whole lot more sense. It's not just the student reps. It's, you know, how else can we as a board do that? So, I think that the jipso's almost free. I felt free, where I didn't have to be responsible for every parent in the district maybe day.
Well, and so as we talk through, and then we're gonna, we're gonna, if you all flip to this page in the, the handout that I just passed around, the first page, I don't remember, but the page four or five, um, which is the exact process that we're gonna be using. So you'll wanna have that in front of you. But as we went through, what is, what is the role of student voice in policymaking? It's not a question that can be answered with a yes or no. It's not, should they be? It's what is the role? And the ideas, the supporting ideas about why she called the question was COVID stopped the listening sessions and the board's ability to mine the input that was gleaned from those listening sessions with students, with the students. The last one, I think, was held up to date, like we said, that it shut down. And I don't think the information from those is yet to be kind of gleaned. COVID has made communication challenging and has changed the way the board and district engages with families. Family engagement is often with the individual schools, not necessarily with the board. Engagement is often from the parents and the guardians rather than from the students. So it's normally the kids, the parents calling the school saying, hey, what's happening? Why isn't, you know, why isn't my kid X, Y, or Z year? Or why are you giving X, Y, or Z? Sometimes doesn't filter back up to the board. Um, is there even a shared definition of what student engagement means within the board? That will look differently for everybody. Um, how is it measured? How is engagement measured? And can it even be measured? And it may complement, complement the work of what Superintendent Garcia and the Student Council have always kind of worked on. So that's how we ended up coming to the question. So we're gonna dive into this model. It's gonna, we're gonna go five minutes past seven thirty, if you're all willing to stay at least about five minutes. And it's a very prescriptive format. So Lisa's gonna present her case. She's gonna tell us what the challenge is, who are the major players. You're gonna kind of read through these, Lisa, what are their conflicting perspectives and interests? What have you already done? What is, what have, what has the school or already done? Um, or have thought about taking in, in relationship to the challenge? What are the states for you personally, um, and for the school board and the interests? And are there any hidden issues that you're thinking about that may not have been uncovered? And then all of you are gonna get 10 minutes. And it's 10 minutes to ask her any questions that you want to about what is the role of student voice in policymaking? How she got there? Who the mayor players, mayor, major players are? Um, what is, who's the senior authority on the issues? There are policy in place that, if it's this, um, what if Lisa already does so far to think about the problem? You get 10 minutes for that. And then Lisa's gonna turn her chair around. And that's what we kind of call going to the balcony. And the reason for turning her chair around is so that we can't see the reactions on her face no matter what we say. So it's gonna require really bold truth on all of our parts to say exactly what's in your heart and your mind. There's nothing that is too outrageous or too thoughtless or anything. She, her back is gonna be to us so that she can't see us and we can't see her. We're gonna have 15 minutes, um, put out as many questions as we can, put out as many thoughts. But we're not going into action steps. So I may interrupt you and say, you're going into action steps already. The value of the diagnostic brainstorming is to really interpret what's happening, what you think is happening from the eight different perspectives in this room, offer alternative interpretations to that, um, and illuminate new ways to understand the case that maybe Lisa hasn't thought about it. Be, I mean, Lisa hasn't thought about before you go into the action step brainstorming. So it's gonna be a little prescriptive this first time. The more practice that you get at it, the better generated, um, brainstorming questions and that kind of thing. So you'll have the whole 15 minutes. And so if we sit here for 15 minutes and you only fill up 10, we're gonna take the whole 15 minutes. So, um, are there any questions before we start? And I, and, and I'm happy to answer questions as we go along or talk you along.
So the first question is, what is the role of that student voice, like, also making, you know?
Yeah? Okay, we live.
Before we start, can we take a long interview? I know we have to wait.
Oh, we do?
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, we just, if anyone wants it, we just.
Sure. Yeah, we can use it.
Yeah. I didn't realize we had till eight, so I've been trying to scramble in.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Oh, good.
We added.
You can take a deep breath there, though.
It's a lot of content. We spent a full day on this. Like, an entire day, not just a short little window here. We're sorry if this is a little.
So I go over here, we, this is to find out if Lisa will, like, why she got, how she got to that question? Or why she got to that question?
I think she's gonna explain it first. So she's gonna have five minutes to block uninterrupted at the beginning to explain all of this question. And then we'll have.
That's what I need.
There's so many.
It's gonna help.
And then we go.
Right.
I had a little rainbow today, better help me.
I would suggest this only, I, so what I noticed speaks to your feelings is that Elizabeth's quickly took a straight decision.
Always.
Most people, you know, took a straight decision. First, maybe slow down, and collaborate with others at your.
Endorsed. Yes, I love song.
It's original, though.
Questions that, ah, I'm gonna pose to you at that board, um, that change of what this is. And then at the very end, she was like, do I buy this, what they said? Do I resent, going through with the garbage? You know, um, it, it's a cool, it was really cool topic, like, if I did it with my board. It helps me really, you know, to find that, and to, like, I know what it is.
My laptop chose this exact minute to start doing updates. It's like, no, I don't have. Yeah. Like, no.
I think you need this. It's trying to help you.
It is not helping me.
It's putting you in bed. It's putting you to bed.
You're gonna put her in the middle.
Yeah, and we saw the guy home.
She's saying, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then she'll just turn around. Yeah, yeah. There are two, or a single one, as we have here.
Oh, my gosh. I'm in the thick of it right now.
This way.
So I'm trying to fill my after-school program, I've had the DPS all these years. We're working out the team, so he stays, collaborates with the students while also serving on the board. So I have to get a new CEO. I'm a CEO. I know I'm a CEO. I figure that, um, so that we can come back. But now you're spending it to university, to school, in the meantime. We should let those serve the students. It was good, yeah. I love you, girl. But I like it.
No, no, don't do that. No, 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 don't ever do that. Then people stress about.
See, you told me to eat them. I think I was only eating the food today. Yeah, it's not for cooking. Good eating. No, mom just said, well, I just have every, when there's mine.
Just take a nap. Your body, you wanna nap? Or just like, no, 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 you don't need to. I said, no, because you're taking five hours.
Don't do that.
Don't stop, don't be sad. But, you know, but however, your body won't snap. Take a nap. And then she, you know, so probably, she's, she's a stubborn girl, you know? So she's busy, huh? These are meaningful times. So they're attached with some stuff. And so she's always like, it's fine, I want to go. So it's like, something, maybe.
Of course, you probably just sleep a little.
No. No, not all of them.
You can't, because you can't do that.
So we have to, why is everyone saying?
Don't tell me that as I just like.
I remember, I didn't, it's all fat sugar. Oh, my head started, but I couldn't remember that much.
Meanwhile, I'm gonna eat two. It's gonna be okay. I'm just gonna have a Red Bull in the morning, if I'm tending to not home. That's what I do every morning. The question is, what is student role?
I'll say it again. Yeah, we're gonna go through the whole process.
You're gonna give us the whole, like.
So we.
I gotta have the wording on the question right, because I wrote it down incorrectly, which changes the outcome of the question. And I know it's wrong, probably that's not what she said.
So if you, I'll read it. It's, uh, what is the role of student voice in policymaking?
Okay.
Meaning in policymaking with the switch from a whole school.
The question, the question is, what is the role of student voice in policymaking?
Look, she's leaving it open. She didn't present her case yet. She's, she's telling guys, hmm. Yeah, so the first I wrote it down is, um, what is student's role in voice in policymaking? And I was like, that is a whole different question. And I'm like, I feel like that's not right. I gotcha. This is gonna be fun, isn't it?
It's really fun.
Okay.
It's actually really fascinating. Um, yeah, it's a very fa, like, cause part of, part of our responsibility is collective decision-making. And so this is a, this is a, a model and a, and a method that's really scripted that actually supports the ability to make collective decisions.
It's like forcing you to think collectively?
Yeah, it's, I, I, it blew my mind.
I like it because the person who poses the question doesn't get to be involved really in the furthering of the conversation. Because if, like, I posed the question that I'm gonna lead the conversation toward the solution that I already had when I came up with the question.
Uh-huh. Excellent point.
And that is incorrect?
Right.
Well, it's not incorrect, it's just not the point.
No, no, it's incorrect. Like, I, I've been learning that because I work with the students and they're always like, ah, Miss Ophelia. And I'm like, okay, I hear you. I do, I really do. Middle school girls will get you every time. They're like, no, you're leading the conversation again. I'm like, no, I'm not. Yes, I am. Yes, I was.
Okay, we are all back. No, no, yeah, we're back. So this, this practice, I will say, like, this day in G A L S is an entire day. Like, we've been an entire morning talking about adaptive versus technical, um, the worth of leadership, how to come to, you know, why is it important to get feedback from all areas of the organization, that kind of thing. So I know this is a little rushed. Um, and I would encourage you to practice with a couple more, um, women of the board. Or, and, and it's really impactful, I think, the reason why it's been so successful in executive director groups or even within organizations is when you start to get people who don't all have the exact same mission or the exact same positional authority, it really starts to, um, surface things that the people that are in a position to power don't actually think about or don't have the ability to think about. And include people in a process or in a, in a real challenge that lets them see all facets and all sides of it. So, so Lisa, um, Tracy's agreed to be our recorder, although there's none who really report at this point. Um, Lisa's gonna have five minutes to, and I encourage you to keep this in front of you. You can't think of questions, there's none right, right yet. But to explain the challenge, Lisa, the major players, what might be the, the. what might be the, the conflicting perspective or interest and. I'm gonna come back to you. Go.
Okay, so the question is, what is the role of student voice in policymaking? Um, and the question came about in discussing student engagement. What is student engagement? And for me, I, I felt like there wasn't a defined, a shared defined definition of student engagement. So from that place, then started thinking about like, um, thinking about some of the things that we have done. Um, the listing sessions that we did, um, in early twenty twenty, um, that we had completed, but then we never got to do anything with it beyond anecdotal periodic conversations. And it was really kind of just put to the side. And, and when we did talk about it as a collective, we all talked about how empower, how powerful what we heard from our, from the students was. And we, and so, so we've done, we've done that. And I, and at the same time, some of our student engagement has also involved the discussion around SROs. And there was a significant amount of work that went into engaging student groups, um, not in our buildings and in the community. And so, um, hearing feedback around the, the SRO's roles and the programs. So if, um, so that was another example of, um, like who, um, how we've engaged, um, students. Um, I also know that, um, Josh, and I don't know that this was happening previously, um, but I know Josh's meeting with students, students on a regular basis, um, since school has been back in, um, this spring. So COVID was a barrier, shutting schools down, shutting down access, um, getting students to even turn on their cameras and engaging, like the, the, the ability to actually communicate from one human to the other was so disrupted for an extended period of time. Um, and so, you know, and that included everyone. Um, and so like that's, COVID still remains a challenge. Um, and also.
Hold on, looking at the other.
Uh, some major players. Also, what parents want and caregivers may not actually be what students want. And they may not have the, like, students may want more autonomy on something in their own lives and in their own education. So, um, at times, families, um, can be a barrier, um, or at least part of a challenge. Um, and also the stu, the, the rights of a student. Uh, adults can often think that their rights and their opinions of their student, of their child, that they have more say over what their actual rights are. So that's a challenge in student engagement. Um, and. So when I, so for an example of that particular, um, circumstance, um, we have, um, a, a growing number of staff who have worked really hard to be inclusive, um, for transgender and non-binary students in our district. And they actually have rights that sometimes parents will challenge and threaten and get in the way of actually the, the teacher, the building, the district actually upholding the rights of a student. So as an example, that's a barrier. And how do you move people along, um, so that, um, it is in alignment with what's best for the student? Um, and also thinking, I think about like every student every day. And that really is an individual, that's, that's, it's individual and circumstantial from every, from every student. There isn't a blanket. Um, you know, we do, there are a lot of things that we do kind of as a general, um, sort of a general approach. But humans are complicated. Kids come in with a lot of different issues and, um, circumstantial, um, impacts that come from, from outside the school, but they're in our schools. Um, and, hold on, how much time do I have left?
Thirty-eight seconds.
Oh. Hidden issues. Um. So one of the questions here is, what are your, my real stakes and interests? Um, I think it goes back to the why that we've heard through this evening is around keeping kids alive, um, creating pathways for them to succeed in life and beyond K-12. Um, and so lives are at stake.
Good. You have seven seconds if you want to ask more. Okay. Okay, so now the role of the youth is to ask her questions so they can further understand the question that's at hand. So this is, if you don't, if you're not clear on who the major players are, what's their formal line, um, relationships? Are there any informal alliances that already exist and seem worth it to be leveraged? Where is the senior authority on the issue? What is the potential that we so far have worked on the problem? Anything that you need to better understand, uh, the question that's at hand and why we're just asking it? This is where it's, it's asking many questions I've heard in the past. But if you move into the room, tell me you have some great ideas. And just rapid fire, go ahead. You spend minutes there now. The last question always says, what would success look like to you? So I'm curious.
Um, that goes back to how you measure student engagement. Um, I think success, um, increased participation from student groups. Um. I have to keep thinking about that. It's a great question.
Early twenty twenty, you guys have listening sessions for middle school and high school, correct? Why were elementary students left out?
So, um, I actually asked that question because it was my very first study session after being, uh, joining the board. Um, and it was a logistical, um, uh, issue around what staff were able to organize and, and, and implement on behalf of the board. So it was really, um, a scaling issue on staff capacity.
So then my question for you is, in student voice, are you including elementary students?
Yes.
All right, cool. Do you think the senior authority would be the children themselves?
Is that the answer?
Does she think the senior authority would be the children themselves? Cause the question is about student voice.
So I think the answer is complicated because it would be dependent upon what the situation is, what the challenge is. Um, because like ultimately, the, if this is regarding policymaking, we are elected to be responsible for voting. They don't actually have, um, uh, the ability or authority to be able to vote on a policy. So I think, um, as I think about that question, for me, it's like how, how have we incorporated in our decision making, how have we incorporated the feedback that we have been able to gather from students and student groups?
As an ultimate goal, Lisa, are you thinking policymaking at the board level? Or policymaking at the school level or what, both?
I would say both. In the context for us, um, as the board, that like really our focus is at the board level. Um, and as I've experienced, the, um, my experience of the board, um, part of what I feel like we've continued to strive to do is be like model. Um, uh, like what is a best practice and model that then can be, um, operationalized?
In the school?
Correct. And throughout, throughout the system. I, that's actually what I really would rather, um, that's really what I wanna say is throughout the district and throughout the K-12 system. Because also policy, policymaking is, can be at a state level. It can be at a federal level. And we can advocate at both levels and how do we actually help gain access and help students gain access to those opportunities?
For example, there were a lot of students who, um, went to a lobby county over the ones that, that, um, no help that. And that was, that student taking, it wasn't with us, but it was them taking, taking the, to do that. So that's an example of bigger than us, but come on.
Is there a specific policy that says that students are not allowed to vote in their school about the policies that impact them?
So this is where I wish Renee was here. Um, my, so my understanding is that because we've been elected to these roles, that it, there isn't a mechanism for students to vote. In the same way, in the state legislature, those that are elected to those positions are the ones that hold the legal responsibility to, um, vote on certain, on, on policy. Did I make that up?
There's some technical things. We're using the term policy interchangeably to regulations and to arriving. Point of this conversation, I heard you say student, we're talking about student engagement in policy, i.e. the board policy. I mean, there's some things that.
Correct.
Which goes, my follow-up question to these is, is there, are, are you looking for a student voice in all policies? With the six thousand series?
Policy.
You know, is it three thousand series were directed to students? Is it four thousand series were? I mean, thought.
Correct. Well, in the conversations that we've had, um, my first answer, my first thought, which I'm gonna go with, is the policies directed toward the directly impacted students.
Cory, you need to.
Not a question about new clarification. I think there are school boards in the country that have voting members. Not very many, because that's not a, okay, that's a rule upon, it's common, that doesn't happen here. I think that can exist in the country, United States. So, um, we're talking, we're not talking about that. Or maybe we are, we would think that's one of our brainstorming things that comes up later. Um, you mentioned, um, success looks like increased participation in groups. But I guess I'd push more on that. The participation itself, for the sake of participation, doesn't bring us positive outcomes on anything you're talking about. It brings negative outcomes too. So I wonder if success might be something, um, with one of our goals around success after graduation that other schools have a whole success. Maybe that's a brainstorming, crossing a little bit. Are there other successes you might look at? Your opinion?
Um, well, this is fabulous because I haven't thought that deep about that part of it. Um, in measuring success, I've been wrestling with more of the question itself. So, um.
And now that I'm the hot seat, I'm really, I'm, I'm gonna.
Do you think there may be, we talked about parents being involved and the voice. Uh, there's maybe earlier we talked about, oh, and push of different groups wanting different things. And the group wants. And I'm gonna say, okay, yes, go for it. Right. So there's limits and that's a consideration. But if this school would be at some point five right now, decide what's appropriate. Because I think that does make us the senior authority, whether you're actually a kid or not, I think it does. But not the all knowledge, it's a, it's a knowledge to make decisions. Cory?
I was thinking about operationalizing student voices. Uh, when we get to the point where we identify what it is that we're gonna do. Uh, one, how do we operate? Two, most importantly, uh, I think it would be important to ask student voice in the room to decide what they're going to do, what their voice is going to make. You know what I'm saying? Um, because the reality is, this wouldn't be the case. We could say, hey, here's your voice, your role, and then nobody wants to participate. You know what I'm saying? But that's not the case. Um, but I can't remember what my, my point was that. I wonder, I think I did ask two questions.
So have you balanced out as a parent and policymaker versus your expertise versus the student development? Have you wrestled with that? Is that even a question?
It's not, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I see where you're going, but I'm not clear in the question.
If voice, if student voice presented on a topic that they haven't had experiences with, how? I guess I could maybe I'm still going back to, is it all policies? Trying to wrestle through with student voice and policy.
Well, I think that maybe you have, um, guardrails on this as we expand it. And maybe it's the ones that Lisa mentioned that are just, that's the direct way to get it.
I'm trying to be very disciplined just following.
Yeah, not going this way, helping set. Yes.
I'm struggling.
I might interrupt you as.
All right. Question. So youth voice is required in ELO programs, as you know, required, not an option. Um, do you feel that since youth voice is required in some programming in schools, it should be required in all programming in schools? That's my question.
Excellent question. Still like mulling over what I think he was asking too, where I'm like, so. I'm gonna follow the rules.
That's it. Okay, so now you are gonna go. And Josh, even at your pace.
Oh, okay.
There, yeah. Even through the mask.
You'll still know.
I can keep reading for miles with a mask on, so, um, I don't have a very difficult face. So the next, now that she is turned around, so this is where we'll start capturing all the responses. Um. Try, and I will interrupt if, if you start going to the action steps right in front of me. But now you're just all having a conversation amongst yourselves. Um, with Lisa kind of listening to interpret what, what you think is happening, offer some alternative interpretations, like what Enrique said, that was brilliant. Didn't love that to be part of her, so you know, her brainstorming sessions is the part about there are some states where students do have a voice. That was, that was new to me. Um, and maybe new ways to, um, for Lisa to understand the case. So I would encourage you to read through these questions here. Come up with your own. These are not just the only questions that you can ask, but what are the, what, how do you interpret the question at hand? What are things that she might not be thinking about, but don't go into specific action steps here? We have fifteen minutes, you're just talking.
I'm worried about who are the students that are gonna. Because, okay, so we, we have a tendency to get past the A D students. I mean, what do you call?
Ask me.
Ask these students. You know, we know that, um, they have a, they play a great role in their group, but they'll get their voices heard. And so then we tend to go to, you know, the, um, sometimes the students, you know, students of color are underrepresented. But they tend to be the ones that are outgoing and well-spoken and sometimes upper middle class too. Now, I was worried about how are we gonna get the student voice of those kids that are quiet? And that nobody ever asks them. It might get, Elizabeth, do you wanna be on the committee?
But.
No, okay.
So it's still on.
And so I worry about, um, how do you get the student voices of the kids that are silent?
I was gonna say that not as particularly, but what I was gonna say, how do we get a better, a broader cross-section of students and student voices? And I like that you see it's like about age roles as well. So getting kids, um, to see that, that their opinion matters and that they, and that it's important how they frame it so that they can be heard. And so I think there's lessons to be learned all along, like how to do that. And the, um, engage cross-section students. And the other question I had is, what role can, should the adults in this picture play? Um, uh, the parents, the staff, um, around the issues that we're talking about that affect the students? Because they will inevitably also affect the staff and the parents. So I'm just wondering how that mix plays out.
And they, and they, I love young people. I know in my daughter's school, there's some kids who don't care at all about anything except, well, we have four hundred degrees.
And then you have a lovely kid, like my daughter that.
Then you have a lovely kid, like my daughter, that I'm looking in the face and asking the question, it might not have the answers. Um, well, yes, we wanna engage those kids like my daughter, just piggybacking on what you said, how do we lead the team to engage those kids who don't care about these types of money? Because they, they have powerful, maybe even more powerful opinions. Um, Josh said on something, he says, he's had a more experience in my, in truth, in things in my mind. But I was thinking about, if we, if we don't focus on student-based and policy, we're focusing on all of the policies. What I worry about is students only participate in, um, a hundred percent in policies that they have experienced with, or things that they, uh, can relate to, or they have some feeling in that, right? So I think about participation, another is a lot of student participation in, uh, conversation. There's a lot of student participation in, uh, whether food we do, we do outside.
They listen to kids on homeless, that came in on homeless issues.
Homeless, oh, yeah. Um, it, I mean, yeah.
Now health, they can dig on that, um...
So, things like that, but things that are less, uh, fun to operate on.
Like nutrition services.
Like nutrition.
Oh, that's good, that's good, but who gets pizza?
No, but the, it's a big thing, because even like the people who work in nutrition services, they talk about how disengaged a lot of the students are at the elementary, middle school level, about really what's going in and out of nutrition services, and what they're ordering, and when they're ordering, how much they're ordering, what their capacity is, students are not, uh, they'll probably be less engaged with that topic.
Just stupid question, just lack of experience in school court, but does, do, does the school court make decisions of policies that affect, like, what is served at school lunch, in-school lunches, or no?
Do we have policies around school lunches, the regulations and the operations is the super tense topic?
Yes and no, sir. When you think about, I mean, this is what makes it all complex and nuanced. You make a policy that says, you know, you will follow USDA guidelines. You can always make policies that get more restrictive. You have that authority. I'm not sure about Washington State, and I'm just joking, I think you have to be eighteen, which limits who can be and run for election to have any, like, I don't think you have the authority to appoint a student, I think you check in that, but.
I think some other states have this ability.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I just don't know, but, I mean, you can, when you say, you could get into that level of, use my portrait of words, I don't manage. You know, there's, you have legal authorities saying, on Tuesdays, we're gonna serve pizza that's vegetarian and X. I keep on going back to one of these opening pieces that, you know, requires changing values, beliefs, roles, relationships, approaches to work. I think our students are diverse. I worry about letting our kids be kids. You know, I think sometimes what's really passionate to the adults, well, we wanna hear from the kids, I'm not sure that.
So they wanna talk about.
They wanna talk about, so I don't know if it's for all policies or, um, my last one is, you know. I think student voices is important, what is the difference between gathering input versus a perception that you're making a decision against your students? I mean, I think there's something to be said for, if you asked me when I was fourteen or fifteen, sixteen, you know, these are, what are the decisions should be made? Probably would've got this in all of us.
Well, my, my question is related to that, and, so, how, how do you, how do you fill the information gap? Because it's just like when we go to parents and say, we want your engagement, and they say, we want, yes, our pop marx. Okay, we can't serve pop marx, because it's, you know, whether you think it's the right thing or not, because we have a violation. And so, we get people all riled up, and they're excited, and they're ready to go, and then we say, hmm, well, give a little bit of stuff. And so, there's gotta be a way to provide critical information. So, Lisa, the students get to a point where they say, you say, well, before you do that, you gotta have, you're gonna have to make a petition to the federal government to change this, you know, so that, that, you know. Take them all excited about these ways where they don't have an interest in me. I don't have an interest.
Yeah, that's a super good.
The board doesn't have an interest in changing that, that's great for me.
I think that.
And I have the philosophy, actually. Where they think that you can make the decision, you can type.
My can.
Yeah.
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 I'm sticking with the question on the page is, uh, what are the case presenter stakes? And I think Joshua mentioned it, that Lisa is not only a parent, she's also a policymaker. So like, her stakes are probably different than the average parent in the district. Well, obviously, there's only five people on the board. So, all of our stakes are a lot different than, like, all the parents and probably the students. Like, my foster daughters will probably hear about a lot of policies, Lisa's daughter will probably hear about a lot of policies, but the rest of the students are probably not going home, and their parents are talking about the policies of the board. Um, and so, what challenges, right, what challenges face the presenter related to loss competence and loyalty? I think, um, because me and Lisa share similar cues, and being ELO providers, our loyalty is first to the students, second to the community, and then third to the board, right? I, I'm not speaking for Lisa, but I've, I've seen her passion on students come first, right? And so, that loyalty is gonna keep, keep this conversation going. But then, what issues are valued, um, does a presenter represent in a case? It's because she's a parent and because she's a policymaker that she values student voice. Whereas, many people have already assumed that our board does not value student voice. You guys were talking earlier about the loud people. I was one of the loud people on Facebook too, um, talking about all y'all. Um, so it's really important to, like, people from the outside looking in, because there's like the wall, that gap of information of, a, a statement is put out, what do we do with it? And then how do our students engage with it? So it's like, there's so many lapses in information, how it actually presents, and then like, if you're an ELO provider, my program is K three-five, I have to be able to present the same information to a kindergarten and a fifth grader and get us all aligned. So, in, in including student voice, like, the question is, like, how is that information gap happening from K through twelve? And how do we present the exact same information to different age brackets of kids? Um, and I think that is like the question, really? Because if they don't have the information in a way they can understand it and relate to it and engage in it, then it's null and void. And like Cory said, we go to those like special, like marginalized groups after ASB, like ASB, the marginalized voices. And then what? And I think Carla said that too, like, and then what? Because there's literally, ev- all other students are left out, not just the silent students, all other students. Those are the only students that we're really gonna hear from.
I think we still are surfacing engagement, engagement for what?
Right.
So I mean, our challenge here is not, there isn't a governing body in ELO. So you may have had that philosophy, and that supports that you, that you paid, but, um, that's not something that's community-wide, shared amongst all ELO providers.
It was very outrageous in our PD meetings when we found out that we were not all on the same page.
Right, and so, I think that it's still a cultural thing that we talk about engagement, engagement for what? Engagement for achieving a high school diploma, and the steps there, engagement. I think as we wrestle through this, we have to be courageous enough to say, we may not be able to do it all, but engagement for what? Engagement in the budget, engagement in HR practices, I mean, there's, you folks are finding this challenge, is you won't be able to keep up? And asking staff to keep up, asking kids to keep up, um, that's why we have representation. I don't have a good answer for that, I just, I think that, I'm still lost into, and my comments to Lisa in the past around engagement are, I don't wanna be prejudiced or biased assuming that, because I can't see the engagement at all, that it's not happening.
Right.
I wanna be just the opposite, that because I can't see it, I'm assuming that.
Well, you have that phrase, from the school, to the living room, or, you know, the boardroom, or the living, whatever, you have that phrase, it makes so much sense. Because it's true, we just need to get the message out better, and then have, and then give everyone an opportunity to engage. But, what's the message? That's my, what it was, like, as I said, any, any topic we're talking about, whether it's, um, vaccines, or masking, or whether it's starting out for, of policies, you know, that is a big number, you just send it faster, um, dramatically down, but, a problem. So, you know, how do we make sure babies don't have information? I think we just need to assist them that. But we're getting into action, you know.
That's something.
It's been a long day.
I trusted myself.
Everyone was grounded.
I was like, right, man.
Try, try it down, try it down. You gotta test it.
Yeah, I was, oh, I think about, uh, as we think about, um, student voice and policymaking, and then staying out of the action steps. Uh, I think about when you, when you bring the student up in the long, and then, and think about the rules that come along with certain stuff, like, hey, we're having conversations in certain situations, and you can't do this, and you can't say hey, you can't talk about that. I like to turn it off to make people's participation. Um, so I also would, trying to stay out of action steps, if they got action steps. I would, uh, put forth for us to think about, um, the saying, nothing about us without us. Meaning, nothing about students without students. Um, instead of identifying a simplified role, let's think about what it would look like to just put forth the option of participation. So, if it relates to students, give students an opportunity to budget.
So talk us back to the information chain and how.
Yeah. I didn't wanna touch nothing with that.
Oh, because that's action.
That's the next step.
Dang it. I was ready.
How will we wrestle with diverse student opinions? That is going to be, as we're working, Carla and I have been working with the student purpose, there's diversity in student opinions. Not just based off of race, but sexual orientation, age, experiences.
Poverty.
Poverty, I mean, all kinds of things, right? Like, I, there's not enough to list out, and if you listen to the students, they have to have a space. And then how will we, as the board that's making these decisions? Just the invitation could have bias. Just the way that, hmm, the ability to have feedback, and it doesn't mean that I'm suggesting you don't, I'm just saying, we have to wrestle with that at some point. This adaptive.
Yeah. Anything, we have one minute left.
Yeah, so, so I think, one, uh, brainstorming, this is a solution, but I can figure it out, but, um, so we started thinking about which kids we include. And maybe include the fifty percent down and down, and maybe the fifty, seventy-five percent down and down, maybe the upper twenty-five percent top of GPA or score. Those kids are figuring something out either on their own, or with their families, or, maybe you say, everyone, that's, uh, you take a random sample, you take five kids that are each class that are in the lowest fifty percent, but I'd say you are in this council with superintendent, with the board, and we want your voice, and we wanna hear about it. And we're gonna hear all these different ideas. We're gonna get some ideas, and then they're like, wow, we had never thought about that, that's a very interesting way to think about the solution. We're gonna hear things that we're gonna say, wow, that is so unequitable and racist, and, yeah, thanks, but we're not gonna follow that one. Um, so, uh, we have time.
Okay, so here, that, what you just said too, is that those are great action steps to think about. So the reason why the action step ring-termings only five minutes is because this is the easiest part, I think, for most people uh, in this process, is to start, like, if it were so, with all the information that you just had, um, what's possible, and what could you do, how would you do it? What are the low-risk stakes involved in exploring the idea, that kind of thing? Um, what courageous conversation, what has to take place in order for this to happen? So now is the time for you to go to action steps, as many ideas as you can get on the table, um, as fast as you can, because it's only five minutes.
I just wanna go to carry out the technical, you are not making any decisions.
No, no, no.
Right, so, this is board, we, we can't make decisions, and so, even when we get to the technical situation, that ultimately buy something, we're working on the skill, at least it's a promise. So feel free to say something and challenge each other, but please don't walk away with, here, well, we decided this. That's not the case.
Thank you.
As an action step, if this comes, a one-question, all survey.
That was what I was gonna say.
What is the role of, of student voice involvement?
Uh, that question's a little complicated, because you're gonna go all the way down to kindergarten, so you might wanna simplify my question.
Well, in a simplified way, asking this question to, to.
Yeah, I'm not sure we wanna ask kindergarteners about this, and I think there's different ways to get kindergarten boys, but I, I think that there are different age-appropriate ways to engage students.
I ask big questions to three-year-olds every day, and I think that you can ask a big question, but without dumbing it down too much, you can still ask a question, but it's just like the phrasing of it.
Correct.
That phrasing is like improper for like kids.
They're not gonna answer a survey, that, they have to have an adult engage with them to ask them that question, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, um, but I was gonna say the same thing, is why don't we ask kids what, you know, what is important to them? It isn't, it, we're doing, I guess, right in the final, we're doing the, um, health survey, climate survey, and also the, that was a little survey, so it's happening one now, and I'm sorry, it's in January, calculating the time for the question on there, so. But.
No, I go back to, it, the question that Lisa's asked us to do is, is where do we engage student voice in policies? I think, when I think about, okay, so, students, when we do a policy revision, A, isn't even on their radar, because they're not much of a student. So do we send the policy with a description, say, we welcome your feedbacks, and your feedback here, as the first step? Under the spirit of what are low-risk tests, or some ideas that this is, we have district email, and I am, the team is just kinda.
Yeah.
Feel, right, people are bringing it up, and I think, if you're interested in this, it, maybe it's for the three thousand series that's targeted specifically to students. These are the things that, the policy's designed to support you, and not the operational policies, and the place to start.
I think if you were to put out the policy with the question, what does this mean to you, to their emails? I mean, we did, we did learning online with a third grader in the kindergarten last year. It wouldn't be crazy to receive that kind of email, than just a one-question response, like, even if the parent had a sit-in with them. Uh, I think it'd be really good to know, but then also, like, I don't know, like, in a simpler way, like, even lower level? Yes or no questions to choo- to children, like, create a yes or no question about this to them, to all kids, and then that creates, and in all their regular videos, that would create a hundred percent test, where it's like, if you only get sixty percent feedback, then that's like, you could see it was only sixty percent of kids were engaged, and it was just a yes or no question.
So I, and I'm, I get this, I'm thinking, board's business policy. So, what is going to inform your decision? So is your goal to engage students in the policy? Is your goal, meaning, we want you to be aware of the policy? Is your goal as a board to engage them in the shape of the development of the policy, when we talk about operationalizing this? If it's a broader piece, it's, if we wanna hear your thoughts, engage your thoughts beyond policy, okay, but it's still thinking about, that's what I heard Lisa say.
I, I'm just thinking we don't have to take it all along either way, we could do a playlist by, like, about, just not say all the policies and what they do. But if we did the ones that are actually capital, not the whole, it's next, like, what's the next one, we can get out these series, but, um, I think there's one coming, but, yeah, but.
I think exploring the role of, like, what's the impact to staff? So any decision like that, what's the impact that turns down staff, that's my question.
The staff would have to disseminate the information, but it does create another burden on someone else for us requesting this.
Well, and parents, because we also have to let parents know that what, you know, this is happening, because, and some of the dinner tables, they're like, what the heck, you know, so.
And, and I'm just struggling with this, I'm not sure we're all talking the same thing around, when we talk about engagement in policies. I'm not sure the connection to, to staff. So, staff for ours, when I talk about staff, are gonna be frustrated, is that, you're not gonna filter all that information, you're gonna expect us to. And then you're gonna ask us to categorize it, and put it in something that you then can back wrestle with. That is a nightmare on staff's part.
Yeah.
Right, because you'll, you know, offense, you'll be like, well, that doesn't work for me, I want it this way, and I want it this way. And so, I go back to this, are you trying to collect engagement in the actual development of the policy? I heard you and some of yours, my, this is my brain not saying that you said this, in the affirmation that you're aware of the policy? I think you have to wrestle around engagement, and what does that really look like?
Great question.
I know the building, but I just wanna say, you had some success with this, um, like, policy, that we, we, the policy, it's, you know, just that has been a really positive experience. Just that has been a really positive experience for the players. So they're more sophisticated in this, most of them. But the point is, is that, you know, they, they look at it, they say how like, who they think the real life impact is, and then you try and put it into it. And that's, I, yeah. So I think that your, you can't touch your question, Josh, which would be nice. If staff, you know, students could tell us how a specific policy that we're considering. They were, um, how that impacted them, or their thoughts on it, or if they'd like to see, I don't know. I mean, we have to be very specific to the policy. So I wouldn't say any policy, I can do it specifically and frequently, you know, all the time. Because I don't wanna do it without.
So Lisa, great, Lisa, you get to turn your chair around now and come back to the conversation.
Can I go to my chair?
Yeah.
Fabulous.
Yay.
She just said no, must stay.
I know, I'm gonna, yeah. If Jeff told me, I would, okay.
God, I didn't know I had that kind of talent.
We've got to. Hey, Jeff, oh, Lisa.
So this is really just, so what was that like for you? Um, is there, is there anything that you wanna rent or buy? Or, you know, what was the process like for you and what do you pay the labor?
Um, first of all, like, in the questions, um, it helped me, um, think about being clear in what the case, like, what was my intention? Right, and how did I communicate that? And how didn't I communicate that? So that was really, um, a cool, just as I was listening, I'm like, hmm, oh, yeah. Um, and I think what, um, what I appreciate, there were some really incredible questions asked by everyone. Um, that, um, that continued to make me sort of ponder, like, what, again, not to, I think Josh can say, like, what is student engagement? And there is a, we still don't have a definition. And so, um, as a listener, um, uh, I, I, I gained more clarity on more questions. Not necessarily solutions, because I feel like there are different mechanisms. But I, I, I came by the end, like, we still don't have a shared definition. And so, we, to be able to get to, um, a next step, whatever that would be, I feel like there, that's the meat of it, is, is what is, what is this? Um, so, yeah, it was, I, I loved it.
Cut is a partisan in that scene? Like, what, what are the things that you struggled with or?
Uh, well, I just wanted to like, make comments. Like participate, right, like participating and like, oh, oops, yes it is, oops, yeah. Or I wanted to breathe, right? Or I wanted to go, wait, could you say a little bit more about that? So.
Yeah, the willingness to not respond, to listen, but not to respond is a really strong muscle to build. Was just gave and put in and not necessarily listen to come out with an answer. Was there anything in there that you feel like you can take away from tonight? Or did the question change for you or, um?
Um, one, one other ad that I, like, it was, it was really enjoyable to listen to how, um, each, each of you engaged each other and asked even deeper questions and challenged. Like, I felt like collectively, there was a lot of critical thinking happening in the collective and I was really impressed with that. Um, so I don't know that that actually at all answers your question, Beth, but, um, but that was something that I really, like, I was just sort of sitting with in listening to, um, the group talk and go through the process.
Anything that you wish had been different?
Um, I think just being more clear with my, with what I was, uh, more clear with myself to be able to that, articulate, like, what is, what's the case? I think I could have done a better job of that.
Did it change the question for you though? Like, uh, is what you heard tonight help you to, did it change the question that you were looking at at all?
No.
Any, do you have a little bit more time or do you want to deal with that?
I'd rather deal with that.
Okay. So now it's, and, and you're gonna get provided all the questions, all the, you know, responses and everything. So you don't have to, I don't have to hold, keep track of that. So thank you so much for recording that. So now it's really just for the group to kind of go to the balcony and reflect on how well you did, you know, during the consultation. What do you wish, you know, were you vulnerable enough? Would you feel like you, what held you back from asking the questions you maybe wanted to ask? Um, what do you think you gave the confidence to the group in that process?
I think it's not really identified, but we've got some common definitions that we need to defend. And then, uh, I apologize, there's great question, past, everybody had a great thought process. I mean, just any of it. So, even the question, what is the role of student voice in policymaking? I feel like this is, and then the board would add a couple of points of, how, maybe even how do we get to, or once we find the role then there. There's something I could add to that question, but more, more of a, um, shared definition. Make sure everybody had a sentiment.
And I think that's really natural when you're talking about very sophisticated conversations and research. But one you gotta find to the question, which is to find, like, who's student? Should see brought up, different students, different ages. Who's student? What is voice? What is engagement? Which policies? Your question is, how do we engage student voice and policy? Other than how, I mean, I don't know if we all had the same definition of those terms, which makes it very difficult for us to.
On any level, right? Not just in policymaking, but in all decisions that students make.
Yeah, well, I'm, part of that is gonna be is, is you can't wait to define and kind of have agreement on everything. Right, and so, you know, this, these exercises, like, this is just one slice, right? It's super complex. Your work is full of adaptive challenges. Which ones will you try to prioritize? Because we have to get the discipline and think the skill of having these conversations. Like, I struggle with, like, which one am I? I struggle with that, like, eh, that solution, eh.
Next time, Josh gets a buzzer.
So like, the why piece is also needed more discussion. Why is important, what is our final, part of the purpose, reach, mission, goal? And maybe working back from that, give those pieces, or those definitions for what is student voice and voice? And you have different definitions for all of us. We just keep working in our own silos, split the silos a little bit, come to one consensus and then you know, not exactly what everybody thought was the definition, but that's what we're gonna work with as a team. But what does it mean to us, what does it mean to the student and the family? What is, is different importance to them than it is to us, the why, the way that it's done.
We're just in every student every day. And I think you would be something different in every day, in every situation. Which we did, yeah, we should.
Carla, can I ask you a question? Since you've been through this process before, what was that like to do it in this setting?
Um, I was going to say, yeah, I can tell the differences that were, were much more on the same page. So it's much easier to, like, there is no, where you're not, people from all these different groups, you know, think of all of the different ideas. So it was comforting to get there, you know, you can say, because we didn't struggle up here that we struggled with what to say, or should I say that? It's just like, let's get it out there and, and, and that didn't happen when you're in a, and I did. We, we set all that familiar.
Yeah, think about what, what would have been different, like, in Carla's case, like you experienced it, or Lisa with your classroom, you had people who aren't on the school board, who don't know anything about this other work. And then there is a level of not knowing and there's different, you know, the more people they can include that are not at the same, have a seat at the table, the more people you can get in this process. But it also.
Well, I tend to bring a lot of different people together. One is that I always felt like it all, is that I have an advantage because I've been through these kinds of lots of times. For other people, it's their first time or they haven't done it and it's uncomfortable and they're going to see that. Whereas, you know, uh, just to our previous experience here, you know, we, we have a lot of experience. What about you?
Um, I think, I, I just was really, like, part of the, part of the real intent, um, part of the real intent is, so since joining in two years as of Sunday, we, the board has changed multiple times and we just changed again. And so really, I'm thinking about, like, knowing that we are now another new team. Like, I wanted us to have an experience to work in, in a real collective, a collaborative, not collective, but collaborative problem solving, um, exercise where the stakes, there, like, the stakes were really low because we have, we will have high stakes, you know, always that. So I guess, like, I felt like what I was really hoping for is to really kind of, um, have us go through a process and then exercise where we really got to experience each other individually and as a team, since we are now another new team. So that was really my intent. And I guess, I mostly just was like giddy, sitting over in the balcony. Because I was like, oh my god, this is so great. Because it's so complicated and we can't, the way that we do business, we can't all be in the room together, right? Like, or, without being in a pub, like, it's, we, our parameters of doing, of, of doing this work is so limiting that we have to, like, we're required to have one-off conversations. And then somehow, we're supposed to bring that back to the group and then we all have a shared understanding and, you know, we're all on the same page. That takes so much time and effort. And so, uh, my, my, uh, dream, hope, desire, um, for tonight was to really have us, um, again, practice being a team in, in a way that when we are faced with a, another high stakes situation, we have a familiarity of each other and a little clearer understanding of, like, how do we think, how do we, so, you know, what are, what are our focuses? What are our more expertise? What are our, like, what are the things we shy from? What do you, you know, like, I think, like, this is just a, for me at least, like, I'm really, I'm really excited. Um, because I feel like we got to collaborate in a way and brainstorm in a way that we just haven't, in my time.
I feel like, because I'm the one new, I guess, so I'm one week on the board and it was really nice to hear everybody in the same room at the same time and like how everyone kind of processes things and how everyone speaks. Because it will really help when you're reading emails. If you hear how someone spoke beforehand and before you get their email and then you read that email, like, I know she did it, but she didn't. Um, you know, so that is really helpful for me, like, hearing everyone speak and then like, kind of their passion behind what they're speaking on and things like that. And then for me, I definitely did shy away from the only question I really had, which is just like, why is this even a question? Like, these are the students of the district and why aren't they involved? And like, honestly, the fact they were having this question in twenty twenty one, I was like, whoa, that's really insane that the students are really not involved. But it's something I already knew coming in, but it is just kind of really crappy that we still have to figure that out. And then like, it's something you're passionate about, something I'm passionate about. So then it's like, how do we get it done before your term limit's up? And we don't know who's coming, that's what you said, it's already changed three times and you've only been here two years. What if it changes in the next year? What if I'm impeached, you know? I just learned about that, you can get impeached from a school board. I say a lot of stuff, so, okay, but I'm just saying.
I wanna challenge you a little bit. We never talked about how they are involved now. And so you have your perspective, Enrique has his, Elizabeth. This is what's challenging and there's, and they, and each are your own. But we don't ever have time to sit down and say, so let's talk about how we engage students all along the process. This was a new question around, around policy. We don't, we didn't start where, how are they engaged?
So I have a question then, how are kindergartners engaged with the school board? Because that's my population and I know that they're not engaged.
Well, I guess your definition of engagement and mine may be different. So the school board is responsible for all those policies and the burden of responsibility. So what does that mean for now kindergartners? Uh, everything from walk kids assessments, how do we organize it? How do we organize the school calendar? How do we fund kindergarten teachers? Now, does a kindergartner know what that looks like, sounds like? Maybe not. There's a lot of different business business.
Part of the role at that level, kindergarten level, is for us to make sure that we interact with our teachers and with our parents and not that the kid, that his parents are the ones interpreting, you know? My kid can't sit in that seat anymore time, what are you doing, you know? And so that, that's, that's. You need to teach this school board too.
All day kindergarten decisions, transitional kindergarten decisions. I mean, unpacking that and not to say that you're wrong, but to say, okay, not everything is what each of us as individuals think. Just like, it's not just what I think, and not because, because I only have the perception. And I think that's part of this adaptive change challenges is to say, what are the most big, important things? How do we give opportunities to have deeper conversations about, so what is the reality? I think part of our conversations is, you come into these experiences, just like I come into these experiences, and you have your experiences. Where do we pause? What are the things that I should know prior to making a decision? What are the legal ramifications? What are the cultural ramifications? It's much more complex.
It is, and we all carry with us our family of words and stuff in every room that we come in. So we all carry our past experiences with making decisions and how decisions are made, whether it's within the family structure or at work or, you know, coming in here. And so the ability for all of you even to, to ask the question, you know, like, is this a me issue or a we issue? You know, is this a, is this something that we can, um, am I only, am I only bringing in, you know, my truth is the truth? You know, those are all things that we often bring with us because they walk alongside of us every day. And the role as a director, it would be really challenging to not only be throwing myself for a minute and put somebody else at the center of the universe, but to also be able to even identify if the question at hand is a technical one or an adaptive one. And the, 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 you're, you're most often have to go to the technical question, like, what is the role of kindergarten? What, what do kindergartners get the role on now? There's a, if you can, some questions can't, have to be answered in that way. You know, is it raining outside? Of course it is, yeah. You know, there are yes or no questions. The deeper questions, the deeper systemic change, the things that really are gonna make difference in the life of students are often gonna be adaptive challenges that are gonna require thinking from the whole and the outside and thinking all the way down to the people that are affected. And so I hope, my hope is, is that even having the difference between what, trying to apply a technical solution to an adaptive challenge, even if you can govern each other on that a little bit, like, ooh, I think that's actually a bigger question than a yes or a no, you'll, you'll come out in the end, I think, with, I'm not gonna say better answers, but, but that's the hardest part, I would say.
Well, uh, well, this has been a great evening. I, I definitely wanna thank Nida for taking the time and, um, and hoping that we can keep a relationship going. You're very inspiring to all of us that, who knows, like, still can do so. Thank you so much for your time and training. Thank you so much for editing us and dinner and getting us, keeping us on track. You are seriously amazing.
Can you put, um, herder of jellyfish on your business card? Because I think that's.
Before, before we leave, I have two things. What I wanna ask anyone if they had any questions around those, uh, questions that they wanted to ask that, or, or Lisa or just to finish. Before, before we leave, I have two things. What I want to ask anyone if they had any questions around those, the questions that they wanted to ask back, or Lisa, or just to finish this piece up. And then, and then I'm gonna just go around the room on the phone, leave, um, and just say, what was, you know, something you learned, like, um, that you thought was interesting, or that you want to follow. Go for it. But anybody have questions that they want to put the shutters on the piece on? I'll leave that standing here.
I encourage you really to leave the stuff too.
Makes more, actually, I'm doing it, and now I'm gonna go back and do the, 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 another level.
Yeah, it, I mean, again, it's a hard model, because coming and drop on somebody, you don't have a little bit of background, but, so I appreciate you offering.
And we're gonna think, we're gonna think through all ways to keep practicing this, um, so we're gonna stretch this.
And expanding circle a little bit when we do it.
Um, okay, so I'm just gonna go around and ask Tracy, what, what did you, what did you learn tonight, and what, something that you may have learned.
Can you start at the other end of the room?
I can't, sorry.
Can you start at the other end of the room?
Yes, yeah, Josh.
He's like, yeah.
I, um, I learned a couple things. We were fortunate, we had a lot of people wanting to do what's relevant. I learned that, I don't know if we, definitions are, um, and I think that it's not unique to us, but I think, uh, defining what success is, and measuring success from a student achievement side, is so difficult to maintain. So we have thirty-seven different benchmarks of a student's success, we make to a week. But in relation to these conversations, do we use those as guides, tools?
What did you learn about us tonight?
How difficult your role is. Like, I just, I, I think I adhere, you know, the experiences, and, um, I can't imagine how you sustain yourself. You know, like, I hope that there is some, when the, when the ship is being pulled in your direction, you know, I hope that there is some, um, care and concern about each other in the group, um, because I think that that's a big part of leadership too, is being able to support people and having a place for those to stay. And that really sucks, you know, this was really hurtful, and it's not often done, particularly like, in a board setting, you don't talk about your feelings very much, and I get that some of it is, because some of it's so public, right? And hope that there are spaces for you all, um, or I wonder, the thing I, I thought about, are there spaces for you all to, um, nurture each other in a way that helps heal some of that, so you can.
You actually invited someone to make it for us.
I learned a couple things. First thing, you know, what's my two things, I'm going to the next year. You know, with the ice cream, talking about the wine, and talking about the beans. Um, but most importantly, I learned that, um, I'm in the right space, to like, to get this one right. Sometimes you get into these, these kind of conversations, expose some shit, you do that you, sometimes you always know. It was, it was nice, like, then everybody gives a fat thought, what's best for kids, and that's what's important. Wasn't chasing, you know, it might have been another baby for kids, and, thankful that.
I'm letting you go, I don't know what you think.
I'll let you down.
Lisa, what did you hear?
Um, one of the things is, is being, being more skilled, um, uh, practicing and being more skilled at asking clarifying questions, or, yeah, clarify questions and clearer questions. Um, and again, I, we just echo a little closely, so like, is there evidence tonight that, um, the level of dedication, care, and passionate commitment, um, is not at all a question around, you know, that we are up here, or I believe the, the best practices.
Well, from my perspective, um, I'm actually very uplifted after tonight, because I, I think, um, not only did we learn all the things that people said, but we, we've got some challenges in front of us that are different than the ones we had last year for COVID, and we're actually, I think, this is a year of meeting ahead of us, where, uh, you know, people reacting in the past, and I think now we have an opportunity to do some thoughtful planning, to lead our community out of, into that whatever snack, and I think now is the adaptive change time, because we, you know, we're really gonna not go back to home. So what if the new normal look like, and how do we help influence that, including students doing these things that we haven't done for, for, uh, historically? We've got an opportunity, and I'm, I'm, again, I said at the beginning, I'm a straight optimismist person, so just know that, that I have high goals, I shoot for them, and, you know, just don't ever give up, so like, focus, I'm hoping we can get that. We know this is good to make it happen, so I'm proud to be with you, and I think we're doing a good thing.
It's good to learn about everybody's strengths, what they perceive, experience accrues, so we can go through with each other better, um, support each other more. I thought this was a good, um, support exercise in this topic, we could, I want to use this other, other, other places where we have concerns, places where we want to improve the platform system for our kids. I think, you know, it was, Rob mentioned it, it's always great to be in these spaces to talk, or to go over there. I feel like we can do some of this work probably in our study sessions. Our time is limited, we had a conversation today on our two-by-two, staff's time is limited, um, so I think that you should be wanting to do more, and more, and more, you have less people, you have less resources of people, and it might be as your funds for a while, so, but we also have to think about, how do you do less, what's gonna get cut out? And I don't know, I don't want to think about that, but it's realistic to be responsible, think of what can't be done as much, also, that's gonna be a hard conversation. And I think we do need the public to think, and that no one's gonna ever want you to think that they're passionate about, think about what sometimes can't be done, because with as much energy as we think, you have it, it's all shows that it should be done, or that is really uncomfortable. You can't find enough medical systems and nurses, you know, and healthcare, and our doctors are quitting. Brother did try to commit suicide last month, so, I mean, like, the pressures are so high in all of our professions. That's just sort of my, my other side of my work, I'm gonna hide in many patients. And, uh, I feel like these conversations are so good and strong, and study sessions are good places where we learn, and ask each other questions. I think there's an opportunity to do some of this, even in our board meetings, where we can have these fifteen minutes or twenty minutes, maybe do a condensed version of this on a topic, and the public can hear us having these conversations, and be more human, right? We're all human, we know we are, we know we are, but if you talk about being attacked in multiple ways, talk about how that feels, I think it's okay to talk about how that feels, even in a public place, if we're comfortable, and saying, tell us how you were attacked last week, email me, but, okay, to bring that out, because then I think it helps people treat each other more like humans, and treat us better, and our staff also better. But I, I'd be interested to see how we could have some kind of version of this, can't, maybe we have great, you know, conversations on our two-by, two-by-two, or three-by-two, this is probably three, it's never worked. Some things we can't talk about openly, right? There is like, oh, is that, if you're considering something, is that not transparency? Well, some of that is, um, you know, there's, there's the reunion laws that can affect what we talk about, there's, uh, panic that might affect some people, if you talk about things too prematurely, so that's all of our, um, and some of that is in God as the holder, and some of it is in God as the giver or communicator. But, you know, like, you have a discussion around tutoring and supporting academic achievement, around activities, just like that kind of discussion, people help the public see, they're thinking about that, they're considering that. And maybe we don't pop through on some of that, other things get in the way, or we don't have the resources, like we just talked about, to do that. But I think it helps the public to know that we're really doing our best, and most of them do know that, but we got the local minority that always comes after any group, looking at where you're at. So I, I, I'm, I'm just considering, maybe something like that.
I mean, it was just nice to be in a, in a different space, he said, you know, and, um, you feel, as you were getting, touching, and bringing you again, and so many times we're in situations where we're trying to survive. And that was nice to be in a, in a place where, um, we're actually getting some, from each other. I appreciate that, it was great to hear your voice just yet.
Um, for me, Dr. Leal, you're really cool. You remind me of my pediatrician, um, you passed me like, three years ago, but you really inspired me in life. Um, it was nice to hear your tempered tone, how you spoke about things you're passionate about, and it just kind of reminded me of, like, one of my, like, HR colleagues who really, like, led me in life. Um, I appreciate you, Josh, for letting me speak as freely as I can all the time, and just feeling like, kind of received, even though I say, like, kind of just, like, spitfire things, you're just like, okay, let me answer it. Um, it was really nice. And for everybody else, like, on the board, you do it right here, like, I just feel like, really welcome, really received, and like, really heard. And so for me, like, taking away the, the fact that we're all a team, it is nice to see you, and, uh, we've, like, ran into each other a few times, but like, this is really cool to see you in this setting. And Tracy, you're always supporting us, and Beck, you really, like, led the work today, so for me, it was just kind of taking away the fact that, like, I'm on a whole new team, with a whole new group of people, and I really like the people I'm with, kind of like Cory said, like, I'm in the right place, in the right room with the right people. And, yeah, we gotta get shit done, and like, if it wasn't COVID, I'm in, I'm all for group plugs, I'm pretty split, like, come on. I think it's, I, I worry about having public conversations, because I'm really quick at putting my foot in my own mouth, um, but I'm in the union too, so I've, I've taken the time, like, there's certain things where we're just like, you will not discuss this in public, I won't. But, um, I kind of worry sometimes with kind of the way that I speak and the way I present, um, that it might be off-putting to people, but then they're like, I'm here, so what are you gonna do? But also, like, there's a large percentage of our community that speaks like me, acts like me, behaves like me, presents themselves like me, and they're the ones who I represent when I come to the room, and sometimes the things I say are not just things that I feel, they're things that I've heard, and things that people are telling me, you better bring this up, like, you know, and I'm trying to, where are my loyalties? Like, it's to the community at large, and then I just kind of feel like all of our loyalties are to the community at large, and we all represent, like, different facets of our community, and it's really cool to sit in a room with so many different people with the same goal. Like you said, like, if you go to those, I've been in a lot of sessions like this, and you don't have the same goals a lot of the time. So when you're sitting, you try and discuss big, big issues, it, it ends up in chaos, or like, that vitriol that we feel on Facebook all, every week at the school board. The post on my appointment was hilarious, the comments, some of them were deleted, thank you, TPS.
Oh, don't read them.
Oh, I didn't read them, they were screen, they were screenshotted and texted me by my grandmother. I was like, thank you grandma, you really brought me joy today. So, uh, I just want to say, like, my biggest takeaway is, like, I'm in the right room with the right people, it's really cool to speak to all of you, like, each and every one of you. Thank you.
Okay, back to me. Um, so I would say, kind of echoing what a lot of you have said, just the, what a team, we have so many people who are represented from different backgrounds and different ages, and, and it's just heartwarming, and I love being a part of this team, and being the support behind the scenes for all of you, and helping to make your job as easy as I can make it. But I just really love how dedicated each of you are, and, you know, you all have your whole heart into this, and, you know, I watch the news all the time now about, like, school boards, that you always see these horror stories everywhere.
I watch the news either.
I know, I.
The comments in the news, what you wish.
It's a problem I have, um, but it's just, you know, it just really makes me realize what a special group we have here, and we have hard questions and things that you guys wrestle with. But it's just so great to see, like, discussions like this, where everybody's respectful, and you can talk and disagree, or, you know, work through things, and you don't get that everywhere, and so I am just really appreciative to be a part of this.
Well, thanks, everyone. So, I guess we are officially adjourned, and, um.
If we can just, uh, take your garbage, throw it in the garbage, we don't have to move the tables back, but we get out on here, it's, it's a simple road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you know, um, Dr. James Scheller and Daniel Scheller, with the, after, but you know, that was my childhood, any of my dad's.